All right, I'd like to welcome everybody to the April, not April, I wish, the March eighteenth, two thousand nineteen Selectmen's Meeting, time being six P. M., Corwin being present. Is anyone recording the meeting?
Free cam.
Free cam, anyone else?
I might later on.
Just notify us when you do, that's all. Thank you. That being said, if everybody would please rise with the Pledge of Allegiance. Flags on the court. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First thing on tonight's agenda is an executive session for the purpose of discussing employment matter from Mass. General Law Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A. One, to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, and mental health of an individual to discuss, or to discuss complaints or charges brought against an individual, as well as under Section twenty-one A. Seven, to comply with the provision of any general law, general or special law, namely Mass. General Law Chapter twenty, General Law Chapter two fourteen, Section one B., and Mass. General Law Chapter six, Section one sixty-seven, and subsequent, and implementing regulations, it's gonna be a tough one. And do I have a motion to enter executive session?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made in second, Chair does declare that we do need to go into executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Poll the members, Mr. Sullivan.
Aye.
Ms. Pachico.
Yes.
Mr. Joe's, yes, will be returning to open session after the executive session. Okay. Time being six sixteen, we are back from executive session. First thing on the agenda is Personnel Board, I will turn this portion of the agenda over to the Personnel Board.
Okay, and the first item is going to be the appointment, a potential appointment of the Assistant Transfer Station Attendant. And I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to appoint James Riley to, as Assistant Transfer Attendant, beginning, what are we gonna make that effective?
It says here that he can-
Not when you can do today, or tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay, so we're gonna make it effective tomorrow, because it's just too late. And just under the direction that is a contract and collective bargaining, and also that there is a probationary period.
The motion made right here, second. I'll second it.
Call it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Okay.
The next item is the, ratificate, the affirmation of the change of status.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made in second, is there any further discussion? All in favor, aye.
Change of status, this was for the last one?
Yeah.
Yes.
Opposed.
The next item is the appointment of Jeffrey Chandler as Building Commissioner, effective April third, two thousand nineteen.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second the motion.
Motion made in second.
He's right over there.
Where are you? Just congratulations on all your hard work, and your passing of everything you had to do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
The Chair doesn't, isn't, doesn't realize, I'm sure he does, that Mr. Chandler had to take extensive classes in testing to become a certified building commissioner. Congratulations, Jeffrey.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next item is the reappointment of Animal Control Officer Lisa Perowski.
I'll make a motion to appoint Lisa as the Animal Control, effective May first, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
Motion made in second, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
All right, the next item is the certification of appointment of Austin R. Alves as a dispatch trainee, effective March eighteen, turned to expire June thirtieth.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made in second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
The next item would be the approval of the Corey policy as submitted by Executive Assistant Ally Getz and Town Administrator David Demash, and it's in your packet.
Did we do change of status? Do we do the change of status for Austin? Or did we just do the appointment?
We did appointment, I missed the change of status.
Sorry.
I'll make a motion to approve the change of status form for Austin Alves.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry.
Then continuing one, the Corey policy that you have in the packet.
Actually, item seven and item eight were basically done together, and the documents themselves were fully reviewed by Town Council in terms of the form and content. I did talk to Joe Fear today, because there was a concern that we should run it by the union first, however, he made a good point in that the Corey policy is required statutorily by law, and it's not a change in current policy, because it's a requirement by the law. The second policy, the equal opportunity employment discrimination, sexual harassment policy, are basically updates to the existing policy, and he said that once again, you know, we can approve both the policies, but as a precaution, what I'm gonna do is, if the board approves the policies, then I'm gonna forward a letter to all the unions, have them review it, and if they have any comments and changes, I'll welcome them back and we'll resolve it from there. But both of these policies have been cleared through Council in terms of being used in other communities, and are fully vetted from the perspective that they are totally current in terms of the policies that are being used throughout other communities throughout the Commonwealth.
All right, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve pending any feedback from any of the unions.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And that was for the Corey end for the other one?
Ah, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. It's gonna be, I don't think budgets is gonna be too long, but we can take it out of order. Are you all set, Charlie?
I am all set.
Excellent job, as always, Mr. Personnel Chair. We're gonna use the Chairman's prerogative for the last time and take the Board of Selectmen's agenda slightly out of order and discuss the opening of the warrant for insertion of the articles for special town meeting and annual town meeting. Tim had sent along a proposed timeline.
Color coded.
Color coded and everything.
Yes, easy to read.
What's the board's pleasure on the timeline and the dates?
I just wanna get to it. So, it's a suggestion between the Town Administrator and Ally and Tim to open the warrant beginning tomorrow, close it, the warrant on Wednesday, April tenth, and we'll review the articles on the sixteenth and send them off to Council, and then we should be all set. So, I'll make a motion to open the warrant on Tuesday, March nineteenth, and then close it on April tenth.
At four P. M.?
Yeah, I was gonna say noon.
You're gonna do noon?
Noon, yeah.
Have a second?
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion to open the meeting, admit the warrant at, I assume is eight A. M.
Eight A. M., yeah.
Eight A. M., Tuesday, March nineteenth, and close the warrant on April tenth at noon. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Discuss existing lease with the Freetown Elementary School. Come on down, please. Get your camera time.
I'm a Director of Finance, I think you're a B., Ms. Ashley.
Meet you.
Well, thanks you, thank you for having us. So, the intent or the reason we originally asked to be placed on the agenda is, five years ago, we, the lease agreement was, was sent and signatures were never signed by both boards, but I, I will say in that in the interim, having conversations, productive conversations with the Town Administrator has brought my attention, there's some discrepancies in relation to the plot, so my original request is that the board take action tonight and sign off on the lease agreement, being six years old, I understand that probably is not possible based on some, some, some language that has to be worked out, so I'm just respectfully requesting, hopefully in the next couple of months, we could still accomplish that task. I know the Town is gonna take a look at that, but that was the original intent, 'cause the lease agreement's signed, my understanding now in the lease agreement, and I didn't know this from the actually, the lease agreement came out before I was even here, even though it's my fifth year here, it includes the, the-
The whole parcel.
The whole parcel, so what we're gonna have to do is, we're gonna have to have it surveyed and develop a, a plan for submission to the Planning Board.
Subdivide.
To subdivide it, and once that's done, we'll like, you know.
I, I was originally, when I talked to the board today, I was discussing is it possible the board approved the lease agreement with that, with that understanding and modification. The problem is, much of the lease agreement continues to reference the parcel a lot, so it may be a little challenging. We have, the school department, I have to share with you, the board and certainly the administration has no objection, we've, even though we haven't had a signed lease agreement in Freetown, there aren't issues or, or questions as it relates, so I, I don't have a problem with the pushback. I just asked David or the, or the board if there's something that we can do on our, and it doesn't appear to be the case, but I'd like to try to get the lease agreement leased signed before the start of the next school year, as we roll in, and so that's the deviation, so I don't think action's needed tonight, unless the board wanted to take the action, minus the, the plot being addressed.
Can, can I ask, can you do a double hat right now? Wear both hats, please? When the Planning Board is gonna look at that, is it just, can we keep it just simple? Like, or do we have to-
This should, unless I'm mistaken, there should be a simple form, because they have the frontage, because they have the lot sizes, so there shouldn't be anything besides a simple formy subdivision.
So, it'll be just the building, the grounds-
Which is a cruel not required.
The grounds, including their well, so that would, that would be-
It would have to be continuous, so you would have to loop in the well if it's off parcel.
Right, well, it is, it's semi-off parcel, but, and then what would you do with the police station, just do their portion too?
They would have a portion, you'd probably want-
Subdivide it all up.
You'd probably wanna do the highway department its portion also.
Okay.
Probably-
So, then we're gonna have to put a warrant article on for the annual town meeting in order to get funding to pay for that, because we don't have funds to pay for that right now.
I don't know, in the engineering account, we potentially may have some funds available. I don't know how much it would cost to survey the parcel.
Unless it's a special statute that speaks specifically to municipality subdivision, it's a very simple procedure, not costing a lot of money.
Okay.
Probably under, under five thousand, probably closer to two thousand to subdivide it. It's, it's not anything that's very complex, because you have the frontage, because you have the, you meet all the zoning requirements, even though the Town is technically exempt from zoning.
It's probably something that should've been done before, but here's the thing, like, when we start, if and when the time comes that we may put additional buildings on there, we'd kinda want that to be kinda open-ended in a way?
Absolutely.
All right.
If we had signed that agreement, which we should've, but if we had, it would've been much more difficult, because then we would've had it signed off by the school.
Okay.
I have a question. The extra land, other than the highway, the police in the school, does, do we know how many acres, what the size of the land left is?
Fifty acres altogether.
Yeah, I know it's fifty acres.
I don't know.
Right.
Yeah, we knew that, but it's just-
But I'm just, my question is what's left, and, oh, road frontage, and should be, be doing some more-
You have some left, but remember, the middle is wet, so the wetlands are gonna get, getting attached to one of the other three things.
Uh, you know.
I don't wanna make it complicated, so.
No, you could, for future expansion, subdivide it even, once you go into subdividing and trying to add roads or anything, that it becomes much more complicated, it becomes a Plan C subdivision, seven Plan A.
Right, I don't wanna do that. We wanna keep it simple.
But you would also save some of your possible expansion, future expansion, if you did that route, but that's not something for us to decide today, that's something for the Building Committee to get recommendations on and-
All right, so you'll work on getting a price?
I will do that.
Okay, all right. Perfect.
There might even be something Andy can help you with. Okay, anything, any questions for Mr. Maderas about the lease or anything that has to do with the lease?
No.
No, that, that was the only issue, and obviously, once that, that information comes forward, we'll generate a new lease agreement, hopefully have that signed.
Okay. Next, to discuss funding of installation of new security system in Freetown Elementary School.
So, so we also asked to be placed on the agenda as a result of the security. We had two phases done at Freetown Elementary School, one phase has been complete, actually has the details for that, I think we gave some backup information on that. We originally proceeded with Phase One with a donation, that donation, as you well are aware, handled by the school department, was returned with the understanding that the Town would look to, to provide some support. My initial conversations, I think that's still the case, that we're really just here to find out what the best practice is. We do have two phase, the, the challenge has been, we had to pay up that initial cost, which was not budgeted for, so it has slowed down Phase Two, which is a Freetown Elementary School phase. I can provide some information there, but also some of our other schools, so we're respectfully requesting from the board, action be taken. We had provided a sixty thousand dollar check from the, from the three classrooms, the space at, at Freetown Elementary School, that had not been money that had been coming to the Town previous to me coming here, so we took some available space and, and the check for three classrooms was sent to the Town of Freetown, and we were looking to potentially somehow capture that, but I know there's some obstacles in relation to how we access that, so that's kind of a long-winded way of saying, we're respectfully requesting, prior to the end of this fiscal year, under some means, that either the board consider at least Phase One, which has already been complete, and potentially Phase Two support. I'd be happy to answer any specific questions in more detail on each of those. Both Phase One and Phase Two are only for Freetown Elementary School and do not involve any of the other schools, the regional school district and so forth, where we have that captured within our budget.
Personally, well, go ahead, I, I think that having security in the school is of utmost importance, and also turning away the donation did put a hindrance on the school, but there was a reason that we did that, and I think that we can step up as a board and a Town and take care of our own security for the elementary school. That being said, that money that is, that came in as a rental fee, goes right into the general fund, so there's no way to access that money, because it just goes into the general, but maybe we could entertain having you give us a bill and put it on at the special town meeting in June.
The, the school department has paid, made the payment, so it'd be to the school being reimbursed? So, that would work.
We kinda did that a couple of years ago with the bus transportation, that the school department had to pay for the bus transportation when we did the bridge, right, and then we reimbursed them the money.
I'd be remiss if I did not, that, as, as I think all three of you are in full support of security at the school, Police Chief was very much involved, and the Department has been thrilled having access to that, and other crews has have that. So, we have sixteen current cameras, where before they had three, really a, a nice upgrade. The second phase would be an additional sixteen, provided even another layer, but, but to the, to answer the specific question, the first phase was the first parcel, and we've made that payment, we can provide that information. We're talking approximately-
A little over nine thousand dollars.
That's for Phase, no, that's for Phase One.
Phase One, which is-
Which is basically the cameras, the additional cameras, correct?
Yep.
Okay, and Phase Two would be what?
Nine thousand four hundred dollars.
Some additional cameras, some locations still that have yet to be identified. What we did is we prioritized the, the locations, hallways, entrances, exits, those types of things, we've still yet to hit places like the cafeteria, some other large places, though, that, that the chief thought would be necessary, and also lots of, some keys, and also some marking and things like that, so software as well, so now police have access to that from their crews and the, and the station.
Okay, so Phase Two would be more cameras, and basi- basically, the, the whole upgrade of the, the system is, is, is all cameras, it's not any other hardware, other than would be for the cameras, exactly?
It's all specific to the, the upgrade of the cameras, including the DVR system and any wiring that's in the building, and then for an additional roughly two thousand dollars, we could have the whole building rekeyed, and that's something that the teachers would really like to see, so the paraprofessionals and everyone have all the same key to get in and out of the building.
Doors locked inside, a lot to do with the setup now, as, as far as keeping the building safe when students are in-
Is that more of a fob system, or is that still gonna be a physical key?
It is still a physical key, 'cause it would require, again, all new doors and a different whole setup, so a little bit more, we kinda took a lower end scale for that, for that portion of it, higher end on the, on the security cameras, though.
I'd be remiss with, if I didn't ask, the scheduling of the upgrade, how did the timeline, timeline run on that?
So, it began at the end of August and ran into the fall, we did the upgrades in second shift during the school day, so it would not impact the students' day.
And did that begin, when did you decide to schedule that, get the estimates and stuff, decide to schedule that, was that prior to receiving the funding, or is that when you received the, the funding? The donation?
It was initiated by the donation, where we had not all the funding in place, it was, it was a plan in place, it accelerated certainly the implementation of the cameras. When the donor came forward and provided us, and we, we provided what we would provide you folks, they agreed to pay the entire cost, at that point, we decided to put, to make the entire install, probably would've been more phased in, based on what, what available funds we had.
Did you sign the contract once you got the donation, is that what it was, more you had the, the study already done and you signed the contract from me?
Yeah, we did, so, so work was done, work was committed at that point, once we had that agreement and, and letter in hand, and basic donation in hand.
Because the donation period was only a few weeks, so you couldn't have done all of, everything in that time, but you already had it laid out.
We started the process, though, yeah.
And was you originally having any funding for that, for those upgrades in this, in your budget?
We had security in place, but it was not just for earmarked for the Freetown Elementary Schools, for all of our schools, we've had to hold back on, on the middle school and intermediate school based on this, playing this through.
Okay, so I, I thought I read somewhere whether it was an email by you, or if it was, I'm not sure exactly the source that you, we're planning on doing the upgrades, anyhow, it's just that the financing was-
Yeah, no, I, I, I know, that's accurate, it's, it's, there's no doubt we were gonna do security, I think we're all in agreement, it's just a matter of prioritizing what available funds and then making sure it's part of the assessment, and certainly the, the ability to have a donation was, was a way to kind of defray the investment cost to the Town.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, concerns, comments? Are we making a motion here tonight?
Yeah.
Because this is discussed on the agenda here. Discuss lease, discuss funding of installation.
I would assume that they're going to forward a article-
Yeah.
Well, we didn't wanna, we didn't wanna, now we just found out the time, we certainly could provide that within the window that you just showed-
And that would be on the special town meeting, because you would want it on this-
Correct.
Because it'll be on this fiscal year, so you'd have to do the special.
I, I, I guess, and I mean, formal actually taken, my only request is, should we include both Phase One and Phase Two as part of that, just so I have an idea.
You wouldn't be able to do that, you'd have, Phase One would be on, for this current year, because you spent the money this year, Phase Two would be on the annual town meeting for next year's funding.
Would you like us to do one for each?
The best.
Well, I mean, technically, I, I'm, I'm fine with that process, but we could actually do Phase Two during this year.
But if you didn't get the funding at town meeting, then it would happen.
Yeah, yeah, the type, right. So, we'll do the special, Phase One.
And if you want Phase, Phase Two would be the, on the annual.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thanks.
The only, just information that I made, just since I'm here and, and I seem to, we are-
You are familiar with George, George, Richard?
Good, so I, we're scheduled for four o'clock meeting on Wednesday, with the FinCom in Freetown.
Okay.
A couple more booklets coming to some other people that have requested it, and certainly we will come back to this group after meeting with actuals, and as you start, I, I thank you, by the way, for moving us up, I know you have a couple of other budgets, but typically it's been the case, certainly we will be back after a meeting with the, the FinCom if, if this board would like to, maybe with different members present, depending on the timeframe, but-
You different members sitting right there.
But, but I, I just wanted to make you aware, so we're meeting at four o'clock this Wednesday with the FinCom, and we'll be here to provide as much information as needed.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think Mixtape is here anyhow, right?
Yes, he is.
He is?
In the back there.
Oh, there you go. Sure, please, come right up here, state your name for the record.
Do you want, is possible?
Is Chief, is Police Chief here?
No.
We're gonna have to put you off a little bit, because he was the one who had a concern.
Oh, he did include his questions, I don't know if he plans on coming in, it's in the packet.
We continue this for him.
Well, we have some questions here.
When I was there, they said I needed to come here first.
No, you are, you're, you're correct. We had this on the agenda for the last meeting, he had a couple of concerns about some traffic patterns and road crossings that your race is gonna have.
He may be able to answer the questions, but I'm not sure.
Did he list, did he list those concerns, that was the, I, I couldn't come prepared, because I couldn't, I didn't have the questions I had.
Well, it's part of the, because he had an email, I think it was, yeah.
This is, this is Gary's.
Questions.
Oh, all right, the Police Chief also had one.
Yeah.
Uh, oh, he wants to know, how many participants are you gonna have?
So, it's gonna be a maximum of two hundred and fifty.
Um.
By the time, by the time they reach the, the town line of Freetown, it should be mostly in really small groups and several minutes apart, just based on average speeds of riders. We put a lot of, we put a lot of off-road sections before they get there to spread everybody out.
Will the participants be racing along Briley Road?
They won't actually be racing at all, it's a non-competitive event.
Okay, will they be on Briley Road?
Oh, yes, they will.
But I, but I believe that, one of the, the Chief, the Police Chief's concerns were, would they be racing, so when they come to the intersection of Chase and Briley Road, there's a stop sign, and he wanted to make sure that they be stopping there.
That's actually where, yes, they'll, they'll be obeying all traffic laws, but that's actually where we requested a detail officer.
Okay, all right, that might've come along since he asked the question.
Sure. I met with Sergeant Rose over there, and he'd said that the Police Chief would want to hear what the, what the Board of Selectmen had to say before he could give me his questions, concerns, and organizing details.
I guess the third question was already answered, but I'll read it out loud. Will all participants be arriving at the intersection of Briley and Chase Road at the same time, or will they all be crossing at staggered intervals, and you kinda said staggered?
Yes.
Okay, and the last question is, what is the period of time that the participants will be crossing at the intersection, eleven to twelve, twelve to one?
So, when they're, so they actually cross that intersection twice, so if you look at the way of the, it works, they kinda go around the state forest and back, so we anticipate them reaching that intersection the first time between nine thirty and ten thirty, and then the second time between twelve thirty and one thirty, and we're gonna leave the detail officer in place for the entire time, just because we're paying them for that time, and they might be, they might as well be there the whole time. We have purposely, they're going, you can see on the map, they're going behind the Valero Station and around the side streets, and that's to make those crossings safer, so they're not going through the rotary.
And what'd you say the second time was, nine thirty, ten thirty, and what?
I'd say between, between twelve thirty and one thirty.
Okay.
It's all, being the first year, we don't know exactly how fast they'll accomplish the other, the other segments of the event.
What day of the week is it?
It's on a Sunday.
Sunday.
And can you just, did you state your name for the record?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm Mike O'Connell from Spark Bike Run Sports, the bike shop in Lakeville.
Well, his concern here is that one or more detail officers may be needed to protect the cyclists, you're proposing one at the intersection of Briley Road and Middleboro Road?
So, actually, what we requested is for the Chief to tell us how many detail officers he would like, based on our plan, and then hire those details.
Ten.
Tens?
Yeah.
Other reasons?
The event is canceled.
The event is canceled.
So, I, so we, for, for the Lakeville portion of the event, we have two detail officers, and they're actually escorting the group through the busiest parts of town altogether at the beginning of the event, to the point where they'll then be spread out, and then we have another detail officer who's manning the one questionable intersection for the entire day. We anticipated- Uh, we anticipated Free Town needing two, but Sergeant Rose thought it might only be one, but again, the chief didn't wanna discuss it until it come before you.
Where was you, where was you proposing the two?
Uh, so where Trace Road and Brayley Road, um, cross, and then one at the Valero Station.
Where Chase and Brayley cross, okay, and the, the Valero. Any questions or concerns coming aboard?
I'm good.
Those spots make sense to me, those are the highest.
The Valero is actually only just in case someone misses and hits towards the rotary, there's an officer to direct them not to.
Um, at the end of the race, when the race is over, are you gonna go do the whole thing and make sure that there's like no litter?
Yes, absolutely.
Garbage? Okay.
And this, this, as a user group, uh, is a little different than the cycling events you're used to coming through town, so, um, this particular type of cyclist are used to, um, they're, they're more experienced, uh, a bit more respectful than, than the ones who only ride once a year and do the big charity rides and.
It, it's, the concerns in the past on some of these events has been litter that was left behind, and cyclists riding three, four abreast.
Absolutely.
Um, is there anything in your bylaws, your rules to prevent?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, but, so they, the best way to describe it is that they know that this is their event to lose, so they all, they all know that if they do things like that, the town's not gonna allow that. So, and we, this will be, we've been putting on events in the forests for seven years, we're one of the only groups allowed to do that, so, just based on how our racers tend to perform.
Okay.
Okay.
I want to take a motion.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve the, uh, use, uh, yeah, the mixtape.
I, yep, I will second that, that will be dated for April fourteenth, still, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
And the, do you want to put provision in the offices as you suggested?
Yeah, you wanna make that as.
I'll, I'll make that motion that, uh, the, uh, the two detail offices as proposed by the applicant, uh, the, uh, by the, uh, application, by the requirement.
With review of the chief, um, one at Valero and one at Brayley Chase.
Unless he has another suggestion.
Right, exactly.
Which I'll, I'll, I'll recontact the office over there and let them know now that I've been here.
We'll be voting on both motions in, in seconds, any discussion on motions in seconds, here none all in favor?
Aye.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Discuss approve change order number two for rehabilitation of town bridge project with the Ettna Bridge Company. How come you saw your.
Cause I can't.
Right on down. If you could please state your name and, um, title for the record?
Jim Noise, I'm Vice President of Agreement Peterson.
Thank you, Jim, and that's Chuck McCombe. So, we tried to meet a couple of weeks ago, and we had some information in front of us, cloudy on exactly what we were signing the change order for. Both projects were funded at the same time, Locust Street Bridge was completed, we're currently trying to finish, uh, South Main Street. Which has been a little bit of an obitross here for the last three years, so we think we have a way to do it, does this change order relative that, and relative to the new change from the way we're gonna do it, is that what it is?
Yes, it is, um, yeah, the change order, um, closes out the Locust Street portion, we, we had, uh, even though it's one contract, we had kept it separately, so the, um, it closes out the Locust Street and, uh, the credit is approximately twenty-five hundred on, on that.
Twenty-six, twenty?
Twenty-five, yeah.
Twenty-five, twenty-two?
Twenty-four seventy-nine eighty on Locust Street.
Okay.
Okay. For South Main Street, the easiest way to keep track of it and in the future, if anybody looked at it, what we ended up doing was, took out the entire amount of the old method, the old method was gonna be eighty thousand to do the, the grout injection and a hundred and twenty thousand for the control of water, so we deducted that total amount, um, it was two hundred and four thousand. And then add the underwater grout, um, system, which was a hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars and sixty-nine cents. There's one last item, it called it various items, and what that was, was Ettna did expend some money from twenty sixteen through to twenty fifteen on the original method, they had hired a geotech to do a water control plan for them. They had Porta Dam come out to the site to see, um, you know, uh, how to, how to, uh, enclose the area so that they could work in the dry. And there's also other expenditures too, um, if the board's not aware, the grout that's gonna be used for the underwater diving is a completely new, um, grout system, um, they've tried it before, so we ended up having to do a mock-up test down in a concrete facility in Fall River. So there was expense involved in, in, um, coming up with a new grout method, um, so Ettna had expenses on, on that also, so that was the bottom line on the various items, that's what's included in that last number.
So.
Okay.
I was just gonna say, we, we just thought it would be cleaner in the long run if we had that as a separate item, rather than taking it out of the original grouting numbers, it would just, if, if you went, went, you know, a year or two in the future and what happened, it was easier to see, okay, you deducted out the original grout procedure, you added the underwater procedure, and then with the various items, where there are expenditures through there.
And I think that's where some of the confusion came up, if it actually did include the underwater portion of it with you, the black dog has been, you, he, they're up, you've got the price for the, the diving company and that's all set, and that's good to go?
That's, yes, that's including the ones, the one seventy-five includes, uh, one's a hundred and seventy-five thousand and change, includes black dog and Ettna, so it's all inclusive on that.
So this is the last change order you've received coming in front of us?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Any questions, Charlie?
No, I can understand the whole thing though, we went back and forth, cause we didn't.
Didn't know that was, including the, the divers.
We didn't know.
I understand the.
Any update on the timeline?
No, I know, um, Army Corps of Engineers, I guess, meets every couple of weeks with different federal and state agencies, they all get together and go all these permits, I don't know when the next scheduled date is, um, they were looking for additional information, which we got to them two weeks ago, I think, so. We're expecting it by the end of the month, but I just don't, that may go a little bit into April, but, um, you know, we're expecting that, um, sign off soon. Uh, Mass D E P had no problems, or it's actually a division of Fisheries and Wildlife, they had no problems working in the time of year restriction, as long as we kept two-thirds of the river open, um, so we can start April first on that.
Okay.
So what exactly is the change number, is it here, do you have that?
It's a negative two thousand.
Five hundred and eighty-eight dollars and two cents, but there's an increase of nine thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars.
That was change order one, that's already been approved?
It's already been approved.
Change order two is a credit for twenty-five eighty-eight and two cents.
Two cents. So do you want to take twenty-five eighty-eight oh two back? I want to take a motion to approve the change order.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Motion made, seconded, discussion on the motion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you.
Thank you.
They broke down to take the money back, that's rare. Chief, Free Town ambulance abatement, um, we have ambulance write-offs for March sixth, two thou, dated March sixth, two thousand nineteen. For February two thousand nineteen, contractual allowances in the sum of seventy-two thousand six hundred and fifty dollars and ninety-four cents, write-offs in the sum of twelve thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars and sixty cents, with a total contractual allowance write-off of eighty-five thousand five hundred and seventy-six dollars and fifty-four cents, board's pleasure?
I'll make a motion, we approve the, uh, write-offs.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion on the motion, hearing none all in favor?
Aye.
Discuss sign renewed proposal for Massachusetts Interlock Insurance Agency, MIAA, a Meyer health benefits as recommended by the Health Advisory Committee.
Uh, there is a letter to the file, we had an insurance advisory committee, uh, meeting on February twenty-eighth, uh, the committee voted to approve the rates as proposed by Massent to local insurance agency. Um, the rates had gone down by point six five percent, so there's actually a, a reduction in rates, uh, which is extremely unusual in today's marketplace, but we're fortunate to have gotten them. Um, and I would recommend, as the insurance advisory committee recommends, that the board accept those rates.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Motion made, seconded, discussion on the motion, hearing none all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, nice to see the rates actually come down. Accept letter of retirement for Free Cam videographer Lynn Rocha, effective March twelfth, two thousand nineteen, Lynn is not here. Alright, the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do you second the motion?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Motion made, seconded, I'm gonna read it, yeah, on discussion, we have the letter from, from Lynn, dear Honorable Selectmen, it is with a heavy heart that I tender my resignation as Free Cam, Free Cam's leader, video, lead videographer effective March twelfth. I have served Free Town faithfully for seven years, I gave you your name, Free Cam, and a logo created for you at no additional charge to the town. I have even used my own equipment when Free Town was without a camera, I have enjoyed my time as your videographer, and will miss each and, each of you. I leave you in capable hands of my second-in-command, Lori Ashley, I wish all of you the best, and thank you for the experience of being a videographer these past seven years, sincerely, Lynn A. Rocha. I have a motion made and seconded, can we also send a letter of appreciation to Lynn?
Yep, potentially in the folder for you guys to sign.
And, and thank you for doing such a good job for the last seven years, um, Lori, you have big shoes to fill, and I, I think you can do it, but thank you Lynn for, for stepping up. So motion made, seconded, discussion on the motion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approved minutes of February nineteenth and twen, on fourth minute, meeting of Board of Selectmen's, Charlie, you were not present on the nineteenth, so I'll entertain that one first.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Uh, second motion made, seconded, discussion on the motion, hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Charlie, you abstained, March fourth, two thousand nineteen, Charlie, you were there, but Lisa wasn't.
So I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion.
Motion to approve, I'll second, motion made, seconded, discussion on the motion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Lisa abstaining. Town administration's report.
Um, we have a few things, uh, one is that Mass Development has approved our extension on the M O U for the Free Town Screw Site. Uh, I believe it's to January fifteenth of two thousand twenty-one, and that will allow us to, uh, uh, prepare the site for marketing and to, uh, get feedback on building a senior housing slash commercial development on that site. Uh, in conjunction with that, last week I submitted a grant application for forty thousand dollars to Mass Development for real estate, uh, development technical assistance. Uh, the funds will be used to organize meetings at residents and development, developers to vision the project as a senior center and a commercial development, uh, to assist in developing a marketing plan, uh, to successfully market the property, and if funds are available to develop an R F E for the project. If the funds aren't available at that point, um, we've been told that we can come back and get additional funds, uh, to, to accomplish that task. Uh, the first step, uh, in the process, uh, from here will be to get legislative approval to accept the parcel that was, uh, approved by town meeting in a cushionet. And, uh, having the town of Free Town accept that parcel, it's gonna involve, uh, a legisla, act of the legislature to do that, so that's what I'll be working on for the next step. Um, I have gotten notice, uh, from M A P C that we're up, eligible, uh, for up to nine thousand dollars in reimbursable funds for the proposed L E D streetlight project, uh, which will be part of our capital facilities budget for the next fiscal year. Uh, we had a kickoff meeting for the M V P grant, which is the Municipal Vulnerability Plan Grant, and we're planning on holding two workshops, April twenty-sixth and May third. Uh, and the, the benefit of that is, once we complete that process, uh, it allows the town to apply for all kinds of additional, uh, uh, grant programs and aid to address some of the vulnerabilities that are found, uh, in the plan. And finally, I, I have a meeting set up on Friday with the Department of Ecological Restoration, uh, to discuss and explore the complex, pond complex solutions. And grant availability from D E R and other state agencies, we're meeting with Mr. Nick Wildman, I've invited Lakeville, uh, to the meeting to get some input from them. Uh, I wanna recognize and thank Kevin Desmaris, uh, and Senator Roderick's for, uh, basically getting this started on the, on this part of, uh, the project, and, and looking for solutions to help the people that are affected by the flooding, uh, in the Long Pond and Pond Complex area. So we'll be meeting on Friday, if anybody's interested.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, since we took things slightly out of order here, we're gonna return back to the fire department budget. Chief, you're up. George, if you have any questions or concerns, I'm willing to hear everything, cause you'll be the one voting on the articles in a few months.
Okay, we want to stop.
Stop.
Stop, yeah. That's the, uh, first line is the chief's salary, say one percent cola, and there's also money in there for a retirement incentive, that'll be effective probably November of this year coming up.
So you're gonna put in in November for your three-year?
Yeah. I only wanna be here for three more years, but we're gonna start the process anyway.
Well, if you start the three-year process, you're supposed to be here for, uh, I don't know what it is, what is it, three years?
Three years. Look at me, I'm, I'm a broken man.
We're living together. We are living together.
So what's the number of increase?
It's gonna be, uh, it's, it's.
Ouch. We had it here somewhere.
Yeah, I wrote it down somewhere. Can't read my own handwriting.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
About nine K, yeah, I'll increase.
It's seventy-one sixty-three.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask.
It's seventy-one sixty-three.
Seventy-s, one sixty-three for that portion.
Mm-hmm.
Anybody, questions?
Nope.
Yeah, yeah. Well, that's just the two percent.
One percent.
No, seventy-one sixty-three is the early retirement incentive.
Correct, the two percent for the early retirement, correct?
No.
No, that's not early, that is not what early retirement incentive is, or, for the chief, that's higher than two percent.
Oh, yeah, two percent including plus seventy-one sixty.
Plus seventy-one sixty-three.
And so we don't know what the other number is. Alright, any questions?
Uh-uh, nope.
George, nothing?
Good.
What's next?
Um, the firefighters, we have the increase to kind of go up to, we had twenty-six thousand for the safer firefighters, and then eleven thousand is the, um, contractual increases, cause this year the step four kicks in, the firefighters will be five years.
Questions?
Got it.
Questions, okay, next.
Next line is the, is the, uh, for, that's just an contractual increase in the reality rate.
Yeah.
The next line is your firefighter subs is gonna qualify a fighter workstation, I actually reduced that down by, by three thousand, because we don't know a lot of qualified firework station anymore, and I moved that three thousand down to the overtime account for the full timers to go to the shifts now.
Okay, you put into full-time, that mean the overtime?
Yeah. Um, as far as the next, next line is your, is your qual, which is I just increased it, cause they have a increases in pay and recalls around, so I increased it by three thousand.
Next.
And then next line is, is your overtime for the shift work, again, I, I took the three thousand from the qualified fighter side, just move the overtime side for the full timers.
Next.
And you go to, uh, next line is your overtime for, for, uh, training, that's in, that increase is due to, this is the year we have. And you go to, uh next line is your overtime for, for uh training. That's in, that increase is due to, this is the year we have most of your medics are now re- uh re-certifying this year. We have eight, eight out of the twelve are not gonna re-certify this year. So that's the line that goes up one year, and next year it goes down again, because it's been on the off, off year for re-certs. And again, with, with uh contractual increases in our rate, it's gonna go up.
That was the fifteen, two fifty?
Yeah, and plus they have the ALS next year, awesome.
Questions?
Not yet.
Okay.
Um longevity goes up, cause more of the firefighters hitting their, the other service benchmarks. So it's an opportunity to go up as, um cost gets a little. Next line is, is uniforms unchanged.
Which up around a little bit.
No, I don't know.
All right.
I don't.
No, you're good.
Go ahead.
That's what I get.
Quiet. Fire en- fire emergency electricity, two thousand increase, fire emergency, energy heating.
All of those are going into the con- consolidated budget.
Well, yeah.
That's correct, right? It's going.
The board decides if they're doing a consolidation of this budget.
Which, uh, so this is, the, we're already starting to get confused, right? So we're really gonna have to just decide which way we're gonna go with this at some point.
I thought we'd made a decision on that.
No, I know, but, but you see, like, they don't, doesn't know, so it's.
Well, they have, we, we discussed it as he had it in, in the budget, with the under- which I do with every single department, with the understanding that those numbers wouldn't get pulled out, to be put into.
Give me back that, like, the, the, the tax, the credits, where the, which is the, when, when he was in the budget, next year was out of the budget, for the.
So you're gonna make those, these recommendations to the?
I would recommend that amount for the, for the, for the fire portion of that, for that budget, yes.
Okay.
In, in the proposal that we've put together for you to look at, whatever the departments had recommended for any increases to those types of items, we had included those increases in the consolidated.
Into the. Into the consolidated.
Option.
You're just gonna have to show a break over the consolidated to show where it all is.
It actually does in, in the sheet, by department.
Okay.
Okay, so, we have now.
Five repair.
The ed-.
Five repair.
That was, that's what I thought we're doing, but.
Uh, boy, my orders are. Oh, don't, uniform was up here, then we did the fire education.
Oh, that's because, are you just doing the increases?
Yes.
Oh, we're doing.
The line.
All right, on the educational and career, it's, again, it's, it's going up, because we, you know, when we add two more full-time firefighters and you're gonna have more, obviously, re-certifying and there's gonna be more.
You have two new full-timers.
Yeah, so that's why that was increased. And the same thing with sick leave, that's, that's gone up, cause you have, you add two more, two more members to the department. You guys good with the utilities now?
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Everything else is level funded. Till you get down to the uh medical billing, we just put in as a, kinda like a placeholder, twenty grand, so we have to, we don't have to rebid it, we have to solicit three more quotes for July first. So I'm not quite sure what they're gonna bring in as, so we, it's kinda like a placeholder, we put in twenty.
Are you still satisfied with the Comstock agreement you have?
I love Comstock.
Don't tell me.
I can't see that on tape.
Too late.
They go to your bargaining position.
Right, imagine they all, they'd all do the same as, a good job, I guess, but.
So there's an increase of thirty-eight hundred bucks to two thou- twenty thousand.
Yeah, we're not really sure what the quotes are gonna be when they come in, so I figure we gotta, we might have to come back with more. It's kinda like a placeholder.
And then you're leveled.
Everything else is leveled, um so you get to uh, the uh, the line, the phones, again, the, those are, they keep going up, the cost for the ear cards, for the emotes, VKGs, the um, the cell phones. And actually, all the, all the phones keep going up. So we, we estimated the cost and we put an increase for those lines.
And plus Station Two.
Plus, yeah, if you add Station Two, also.
Is that gonna hit into your aggregate budget, or is that specialized?
That'll be going in the aggregate.
You covered wireless, four hundred for wireless.
It's twenty-four hundred.
And level to, until, all right, medical supplies that we are.
Medical supplies, we increased it by, by two thousand, we, the number one, of course, the meds keep going up, and the two, we use a lot, a lot more meds now, especially knock-in and um the non-opioid drugs.
And some of them are coming up to their expiration dates, so we gotta replace them.
Well, how are you, how are you rotating through now?
Uh usually Charlton uses the best price.
Charlton?
Yeah. Basically, we have a, we have a, just a vendor, we, we go to for price quotes, and almost always Charlton.
Charlton Pharmacy.
Charlton Pharmacy has the best price for those kind of meds.
Okay.
Sometimes not, but most of the times done.
And you're leveled to, is that it, that is it?
That's about it. The version hasn't changed.
See, a total budget projection is one million, two sixty-one, two eighty-seven?
Yeah.
What's the total increase? Do you have it? Kim, do you have that?
Eighty-one thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven, sixty-eight cents.
Say it again?
Eighty-one thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Can we talk about fire capital, or?
What do you wanna talk about?
Capital.
Oh, you want to talk about capital budget while we're here?
Capital budget?
That's what we do.
Is that on the agenda?
Well, that's part of the fire.
I have.
Okay.
Capital and equipment.
Should I have capital agenda again, did you make your capital?
I didn't, I didn't know we were gonna be talking capital.
Okay.
Um. Capital equipment?
Building?
We've got capital equipment and capital.
Oh, yeah.
No, we have an ambulance for next year to be replaced, rescue twos.
In the nineteen, the?
No, in two thousand twenty.
Twenty budget? And what's the increase on that?
We're looking at at least three hundred and thirty thousand for the ambulances.
Three hundred and thirty thousand for the ambulances?
That's what.
And you do that at three yearly, so how do you?
Four yearly.
Four yearly. What do you have for capital building? Is that the only capital equipment?
That and just the, we have, so the injured from Station One has been replaced, that is still waiting on the station itself, we're regrouping with that. And this is the last year for the SCBA, for this year's budget, the year pass will be replaced for the entire department, we do Station Two this year.
The year pass.
That's ninety-nine thousand.
That's the cost for these, for the four years.
For the ambulance, I don't, we haven't worked those numbers out yet, help me.
Uh, no, we're budgeting ninety thousand for the first year and then ninety-five thousand for the next three years, but until we know what the interest rate's gonna be. We have it calculated right now at five percent.
But I, I asked a couple of attorneys at board amulets, what they paid for them, and they went from three fifty to like two ninety. I looked at the FKM, which is the state bid list for ambulance, and I did work out numbers, we're looking at, and I think we're gonna move to forty.
Should we get an Atlanta truck for three thirty?
I know.
For the ambulance. There you go.
Ambulance are tough, man.
All right, in capital, yeah, I know.
And.
Capital, in capital budget, is anything in capital?
There's fire station.
Building capital.
The fire station improvements is, we're still waiting on a.
Quote from the door?
At least a, a, a number from the door.
Quote from the door.
Mm-hmm.
To, to get the door screened.
We expect that's, uh, last number I heard was one ten.
Do you have a plan for that, right?
Yeah.
What's that?
Uh, wasn't there mention it was like one ten?
I was originally around one hundred thousand, not quite sure where it's now, but we have to read, because we're.
Didn't we get an email?
Yeah.
I did.
Oh, all right, okay.
I got a hundred and thirty-eight five in the budget.
But then he subtracted out.
You're carrying one thirty-five right now for that?
Yes.
But he subtracted out the, the costs that we've uh spent to date, it came to, it netted down to one ten, I wanna say.
Okay.
That's just off the top of my head.
No.
So I'm confused.
I think about because of the engineer and.
Yeah, the engineer.
Yeah, that does include the engineering.
We'll be proof the engineer in yet, I know, at the fall meeting, right?
Yep.
Right.
So that one thirty-eight number you have doesn't include engineering?
But he, but he included it in his, the one thirty-eight.
Yeah, because it came through at one forty-seven, forty-five.
Yeah.
Yeah, I.
Uh, I'm, I'm confused.
Let's go back and have.
All right, okay.
Yeah. I can tell George is really, is interested in that, and that's, when he's on, he'll be uh scrubbing out. All right, any questions, concerns? George, any questions? Charlie, Lisa?
No, I'll go over it again.
Besides capital budget?
Okay. I will, can I just say one thing? For Engine One, we now spent over a year before we actually placed an order for it, so now in that year time, the prices have gone up again. So we may be back knocking on your door again, a couple more bucks for the, for the pump.
Okay.
When are you leaving?
Three years from November, according to the.
There's a story I have that, well, I picked November, cause that would give me forty years of service.
That, and Thanksgiving's your favorite holiday.
No, that'd give me forty years of service, and I thought, you know, it's a wrong number, but we'll see, see how it goes.
Forty years?
Forty years.
That makes you like seventy.
I feel like I'm seventy.
I feel like.
It's a breaking.
Yeah. Thanks, Chief. All right, last one is um Highway.
Tim, do we have like an overall budget?
No, that's all what Ally and Kim put together. Uh, are you looking for extra sheets?
You know what I mean?
No.
You're looking just for the omnibus one, right?
Yeah. It's all right, just, can, I just wanna. Add it in for the next. Yeah.
All right, Chuck, we're gonna go, anything funded, obviously, we don't need.
The numbers.
Uh, four twenty.
Four twenty. So might as well start right at the top. Increase thirteen ninety-seven reflecting two percent incre- increase similar contractual raises. That's pretty self-explanatory. Go ahead.
Well, we basically level funded everything. If you look at the bottom line, we're less money than we were last year because of uh Teddy retiring. Um, we moved around some figures to represent kinda what we, to be a better reflection of what we spent over this last year. But um, yeah, short of the contractual expenses, we added forty-eight hundred dollars to, to get rid of the street sweepings and or possibly the catch basin material for the coming year. Um, that's basically at the suggestion of David. Um, we talked about it. You know, we, we got ninety-six hundred dollars to remove the material that we have in the yard, that, that we should hopefully be doing shortly. And that's basically half of that figure. We may spend two thousand of that, we may spend six thousand dollars. Really don't know, cause we've never done it before. And it all depends on how much material we actually pick up. So uh, that forty-eight hundred dollars is just kinda a shot in the back.
I'm trying to save on it. What'd you base on? Cause you, you wanna say something?
I know, I was gonna remind you about another line.
No.
But the base hanging on, right now, we'd get ninety-six hundred this year.
You know typically how much you produce annually? Never even looked at that before?
Eh, 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 no, every year's different.
Yeah.
This year should be lighter, cause it was a lighter winter.
We didn't put much down.
Um, you know, we started sweeping today. Today was day number one of sweeping, so um. Today, I had the guys, this haul material, we uh, we've got it separated, segregated from everything else. Um, I'm waiting for John Mello to come back from Florida, to talk to him, to see if he'd be willing to take the material. So basically, none of the materi- I'm hoping none of the material will stay in the yard, so as soon as it's loaded, the truck is loaded, it either, it's either gonna go to Crapo Hill, which is gonna cost a boatload of money, or uh John Mello's yard.
And now you're talking about street sweepings? Are you talking about, street sweepings aren't the problem, it was the catch basin cleanouts?
Basin stuff is gonna be, we're gonna cross that region and come through.
Okay.
Cause right now, honestly, the only place that I know that will take that is landfill in Portsmouth. Uh, we are not really set up to do that, so what probably will happen is that material will fall to maybe John Mello's yard or segregated in our yard and hauled off campus by um someone, certified hauler.
He's a certified hauler, right?
He is. So that's where we stand. And like I said, that forty-eight hundred dollars, I don't care one way or another. You can keep it there, you can throw it out. It's kinda, like I said, just a shot in the back. Um, we, we could be a two grand, we could be a ten grand. Street sweeping, I think, is gonna be very light this year.
The non-contaminated street sweepings, you, you're not mandated to get rid of it's, it was the catch basin cleanouts, and you had everything mixed, that's why we had to get rid of everything.
I, I get it.
Okay.
But we just assume, be proactive and just either haul it straight to Crapo Hill for covering the area or haul it to John, and John can either mix it or who am I, well, and mix it with material. I just, just assume not have it on site, so. Yeah, that's where we stand. Crapo, Crapo, Crapo Hill gets fourteen dollars a ton to dispo- to dispose of, so.
So there's nothing on, no other increases in here except for contractual stuff?
I don't believe so.
Nothing except contractual for that? Uh, you wanna touch on the uniforms, cause that's a zero.
Okay, yeah, the uniform line is, is, is totally messed up because of the new contract and doing away with uniform services, so we really don't have any idea where that's at. Um, so once somebody decides what they wanna do with contracts, we can plug that number in.
I think you should just leave it at last year's number.
Okay.
So whatever last year's number is, just put that back in there.
Will that cover? I don't think that'll cover what, what the new World Order wants for uniforms.
Yeah, I think it does.
I think it does.
Ally was saying, yeah.
Yeah, Ally's saying yes.
It will be enough?
It will be one and a half.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Perfect.
And then, then that's it. Um, I said Teddy retires in July, and uh, we'll go from there. With if and what we're gonna replace him with.
Any questions, concerns, Charlie?
No, I'm good.
Lisa?
Uh-huh.
George?
Do you have anything um special set up for him?
For Teddy?
Yeah.
We'll do something in house.
All right.
Yeah, yeah.
Do, I mean, I didn't know if you wanted a citation from the, uh, delegation.
Probably. Well, we're, we've, we've got, we've got months before all that happens and, and um hopefully the body holds together between now and July.
Okay.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Uh, nothing in capital budget, the capital equipment?
Asking for a dump truck and a pickup truck.
We don't even have capital in here.
Okay.
You gotta do capital all the time, cause Gary's gonna need one of those too.
And outside of highway, you had an increase for the streetlights, just because the bills are extraordinarily high this year compared to the five-year average.
We're moving and we're gonna have uh an, an amount of money set aside that we're gonna convert the lights over to LEDs in the upcoming year, and get a, a grant that's gonna help offset some of those costs and. I think the dump truck was like a hundred and seventy-three thousand during, since nineteen ninety-four. And the pickup truck was to be placed at two thousand twelve, to, to approximately a hundred forty thousand miles. My truck, which is the newest truck, has ninety-four, ninety-five thousand miles on it, so just, just to try to keep up with.
That when you bump down and?
Right, right. You know, I mean, my suggestion would be, you know, maybe our older pickup truck, maybe delegate that to the town maintenance man. And we can once and for all put that PT Cruiser out of its misery. And then my truck, we bump down to the shop truck and then, you know, we, we continue with the rotation, what we always do.
Okay. Any other thing else? All right, Chuck, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. All right, last thing on the agenda is remarks from the Board of, from the Selectmen Chair, and that is me. This is my last meeting. George, congratulations, well, hopefully, congratulations. Um, thank you for attending tonight. I think it makes it a little, the continuity a little better if you're up to speed with what's going on with the board and. I think it makes it a little, the continuity a little better if you're up to speed with what's going on, or, makes it a little easier when you step into the seat.
Um, I'd just like to thank the town members for allowing me to represent them for the last three years. I'd like to thank the present and past board members, Mr. Sadik, Mr. Sullivan, Mr. Chico. Um, we haven't always agreed on everything, but we've always worked and strived towards what's the best for the town, and our opinion, what is best for the town. So, we've done a lot in the last three years, we've built our capital stabilization budget, we've built our stabilization budget. Um, we've put on firefighters for the first time, we've actually had firefighter positions, three of them, for the last, for the first time in almost twenty years. Um, we've got the police station back to its full complement of, of personnel, except for Swede being injured here, but we're back to nineteen members. We have a police station, that we actually have a project that's underway, we've got that going. Chief's got himself a ladder truck to replace that thing that was in violation, so that's a good, good thing. The town's moved forward, and I, I, I was proud to be part of, a small part of that, so.
That's all I really wanted to say, we got some new members on board, we hired David, he's been doing an excellent job. We brought Jeffrey along, and we hired Derek Macedo, Jeffrey was just here for the building commissioner. Um, so, I think the town's trending in the right position, hopefully, you guys will take over and carry the mantle on and get us through. So, that being said, any other stuff that's truly in front of the board? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
Rob.
Yeah?
Thank you very much for your service and.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
More than some people think.
I will tend to entertain a motion to adjourn my final meeting unless something catastrophic happens.
I'll make that motion.
You got a second?
Second.
Motion made in second and discussion on the motion. Here and now, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion is, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.